Good morning. Today is June 15th, Friday. It's nine o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call the meeting of the Logan County Commissioners for Order. Please rise for flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item two, item three, any citizen desiring to be heard. Hearing now. Item four, consideration of possible action on approving minutes of June 4th and 12th of 2018. I'll make a motion.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, a call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item five, consideration of possible action on awarding field bid 2019-2 for six-month rock haul tabled from June 4th, 2018. Okay Troy, should we start with one? One, two, three?
It's easier for me to start with, keep them in order, District one, District two, District three, and then we figure out if y'all took the same or not.
Okay. So, picked up virgin hot mix would be Atlas. Recycled, or recycled hot mix would be Haskell Lemon.
Okay, I'm gonna stop, yeah?
Yes ma'am. Because we bid it too much.
Well, and Commissioner Piercey asked for that change. Helped me get the right bid. To bid recycled and virgin.
That's what we've been getting is recycled, not knowing how much it was.
Yeah. So, you're gonna do pick up a virgin hot mix, all types?
At Atlas, yes.
At Atlas. And pick up?
Recycled at Haskell Lemon.
Recycled, Haskell. Kane?
And deliveries, I'm kind of mixed here. But, I mean TJ Campbell had the lowest price. I mean, that across the board if I read my sheet right. I would, I would pick TJ Campbell with one caveat. They often don't make a lot of asphalt when we need it made. So, if they don't have it, then I want to be able to revert to.
We can go to the next lowest bid. Or, I think that if, as a choice that this board could make, because historically they've been unable to fulfill on demand as a reason to not select them at all. I mean, that's up to you all.
Well, I'm first in the barrel here, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say that I've had problems getting them to mix. I mean, even, you know, a couple hundred tons of asphalt, that's not a small order, but they won't, unless they're making it for ODOT, they won't do it. Or they haven't been.
And that's picked up?
Uh, delivered. Yeah, they had the lowest price delivered on my sheet. Like, a dollar or two.
Well, hang on ma'am, let me, that's picked up. This is delivered?
Yes sir.
On District three, they... Just take type B asphalt. TJ Campbell bid 47.73, and Haskell Lemon bid 55.20. I mean...
On delivered?
Yeah.
Well, I look at this again.
No, that seven dollars is a ton difference.
Yeah, between TJ Campbell and?
TJ Campbell and Haskell.
Oh, they're absolutely lower, but if they've not been able to produce, you can use them as the award, and then when they can't produce, we can go to the next lowest.
And I would question their quality.
But I would agree with that too.
Well, there's no doubt Haskell Lemon, I think, makes better asphalt than TJ Campbell.
No question.
About seven dollars a ton, so a lot of difference.
And that's kind of where I'm at. I have a real hard, I'm kind of mixed feelings here.
That was, I called Troy and asked her if we put on our bid specs, that it could be no more than 25%, recycled asphalt. And we did. The problem is, they might bring you 35% in, you don't have no way of testing it.
That's true.
So, I mean, but I don't, seven dollars is a lot of difference.
There is a lot of difference. Okay, so...
They can't get it.
But to make it, on District three, I'm gonna go with TJ Campbell, and if they can't provide, I'm gonna go to Haskell Lemon.
I'm kind of in the same boat.
And that's for delivery, right?
Yes.
And pick up on District three.
Okay. Mike, it's the same for District two on deliver. TJ comes in way less, but...
I'm gonna go the same route this morning.
Okay, so, let me, let me back up just a second. District one, you're gonna go delivery with Campbell for both virgin and?
No. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Recycled.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, it'd be all product?
Yes.
Okay.
Based on their ability to deliver when we need it. If not, we're gonna go with Haskell Lemon. We're gonna go to them.
Okay. Mike? For pickup?
He's gonna go with Atlas.
No, he took, he took Atlas for pickup.
I took TJ Campbell for everything. Atlas as an all.
Okay. I hadn't got to District three yet, though. That's why you're confusing things there.
I see.
Marvin took Atlas for virgin pickup.
Yes.
And Haskell for recycled pickup.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So, you are gonna do virgin from Atlas, and recycled from Haskell. And then on delivery of all product, we already have TJ Campbell based on availability, if not available, going to Haskell.
Yeah.
For delivery.
I, I still have a problem with Haskell, and I think because of quality and availability, I think I'm gonna go with Haskell. And at the next highest.
So, you don't want Campbell at all?
Uh, I could use him as backup.
Campbell has the low bid.
Right.
So, if you're wanting to take someone other than Campbell, you're gonna have to justify, or you take Campbell, and if they cannot provide, then we can step to the next vendor.
Well, you can use that letter so you don't like your asphalt.
I just don't like their asphalt.
Exactly. That's why I said you have to justify if you're not gonna take Campbell.
I'll write a letter and say, "I don't like their asphalt."
So, for delivery, you want Haskell for all product?
Uh, I think so, I guess.
And the reason being is you do not like the product at TJ Campbell.
All right, and availability.
Moni for pickup virgin?
TJ Campbell straight across the board, Haskell in the back end.
TJ Campbell pickup, delivery, all product?
Being the lowest bid.
And, but it'll be the same thing, if not available, go to Haskell.
Another thing that Haskell provides, like, when I lay an asphalt road, I'll call them up and say, "Hey, I'm gonna have to shoot tack on it," and a lot of times they'll just come out and tag it for me with no charge. I mean, that's a pretty good benefit.
Yeah, it is a pretty good benefit.
So... To reiterate, make sure I'm right here. District one, pick up a virgin, all product. Atlas, pick up a recycled, all product. Haskell, delivery TJ Campbell, all product. If not available, will drop to Haskell. District two, pick up virgin, Atlas, pick up recycled, Haskell, delivery of all product, Haskell. You prefer their product, you're not fond of TJ Campbell's product, so you're gonna take Haskell as the best bid, not the lowest.
Boy, that process is, right there, there's so much further to go until pickup. You know, I think I wanted to change that to Atlas, please.
On what?
On the pickup.
Well, you had pickup with Atlas for virgin.
All right. And?
And you had Haskell for recycled, and you want Atlas for all product?
I think Haskell for all product, yeah. Uh, pickup.
Okay, let's back up. You had virgin pickup for Atlas, and then you had recycled pickup for Haskell.
Right.
Are you now telling me you want Atlas for all product?
That's correct.
And for delivery of all product, you have Haskell.
That'll work.
And District three has TJ Campbell for all product, based on their availability. If it's not available, we'll go to Haskell. So, would somebody?
Hang on, I wasn't finished with all mine yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. We haven't got the crushed asphalt yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, I was looking on that, on, I didn't see anybody bid. Did I miss bid picked up crushed asphalt?
I've got it.
Oh, hang on. TJ Campbell. TJ Campbell at $13 a ton for crushed asphalt, picked up. And also TJ Campbell at $18.79 or $19.70, depending on what zone it is, between 1977 and 1879, delivered. So, both of them, TJ Campbell for crushed asphalt, both picked up and delivered for District one. I as well.
Yeah, I didn't take TJ Campbell.
Yeah, I'm fine. Okay. So, do you want me to reiterate the entire bid package, or did we have it all?
I think we got it all.
All right.
I'll move that we approved.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Onto...
Actually, y'all did those backwards.
Yep.
Oh, well.
Just did six.
Yeah, so we did six. Now five. That was crushed, that was asphalt, crushed asphalt. Now we're gonna do rock for six-month bid. I can't believe I did that. It's your fault.
I'll take it. Can I start this time? Let's go three, two, one. District three's gonna go with Stewart Stone. Out of Cushing, seven dollars a ton. And for delivery, it looks like we got one option, Brown Transportation.
Ditto here.
Aye.
Ditto.
You wanna look at those, see if you need them?
Don't need them. I, I've got the same thing. And to add to that, we were gonna, I'm gonna say, Pawnee for rip wrap, because we're gonna need some of that coming up.
Uh, is that Stewart Pawnee on rip wrap?
Yes.
I, I, yeah, we're good with Stewart. So, to clarify, for pickup, all product, all three districts, Stewart Stone. Delivery, all product that they deliver, Brown Transportation. Understanding Stewart will rip wrap out a Pawnee, but it's still Stewart.
I've got a qualification there as well on the delivery.
Okay.
We can, I said we, I've been able to talk to a trucking company, AA Trucking, and they will go pick up rock for us at Quahog or Drumrite or Cushing or wherever, and haul it back to where we need it, cheaper than we can buy it from Brown Transportation at a mall bid. When you, when you figure buying it, picked up by the ton, and then paid, just pay the transportation cost, it's cheaper to hire a truck company to go do that. So, if I'm able to do that, I don't, do I have to use Brown to?
No, I don't think so. We can do it less and get the same rock. Because Davis Rock is different, so...
Davis Rock is different, it's dirtier, in my humble opinion. I like, I like the rock from Drumrite and that area over there. Wouldn't we need a six-month bid on it? Or can you?
No, the delivery service is a delivery service.
Okay.
So, no.
Okay. Okay. With that caveat, then I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Need a motion?
I do.
I'll move with a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item eight, consideration of possible action?
Item seven.
Item seven? Oh, okay, never mind. I was trying to get through pretty quick here. Consideration of possible action on approving scope and fee proposal of guy engineering an amount of $79,620 for replacement of bridge 198A over Bird Creek in District two.
What's that with this, Mike?
This is a, a bridge there on Midwest South of the 33105 intersection, and it's a little Sutton Hington Bridge, and it's got an asphalt top on it. It moves. It needs to be a concrete box, and we want it to be according to federal specs so that we can apply for an STP for that bridge, and if we had the engineering done, why we could do that. We'd like to pay that through CVRI if possible.
That is not on the agenda.
I know, but...
Well, that was my next question, how are you gonna fund this?
Yeah, I'm not gonna fund it out of M and O, I guarantee. But it's a, it's gonna be a $200,000 bridge once everything's done, so...
So, you're wanting to fund the whole project through the CVRI, or the CI RV?
Uh, no, 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 just the engineering. If possible. If possible, I still...
The funding, that, that I was not given to be on the agenda.
Right, right.
So, if you're counting on that to pay this, I think you don't do anything with this today till you can look back and try to get the funding approved. Because otherwise, you're gonna tie this to your own funds.
I got it. All right, then, I think we need to table this.
All right, item seven's tabled.
Just, I mean, how come you didn't put them on CI RV?
On CI RV, on my CI RV, just tied it. Right? Got Waterloo Project, got Luther.
I was just asking.
Well, I mean, you could put it in the queue, I think is maybe what, I don't want to speak to money, but, you know, we could put it on, you put it on the tail end, or readjust your priorities, and I mean...
We'll take, we'll take funds anywhere we can get them. You have, so we'll, we'll, we can stick it on there.
All right.
Depends, Paul, no, but, you know...
Item seven is tabled. I'm moving on to item eight. Consideration of possible action on approving resolution establishing participation in ACCO SIG for workers' compensation for FY 2018, 2019, and selection of payment option. I suppose that's paid over time, or paid more than some, where we make, where we pay less, we do it in lump sum.
Correct. They give you, we can pay it all in, in full by the end of July, or we can pay two installments. There's an additional $3,000 if you take the installment. The last several years, we have paid it in full to save that money for the workman's comp.
And it went up $10,000?
It did go up a little over $10,000. We, I have a claims run if you want to see it. We had one large claim this year, and several small ones, plus the annual bump the insurance company's gonna give, so...
What's, what's our participation cost for workman's comp?
The bill.
They don't estimate it, the bill for next year.
The bill, well, this is guaranteed, I mean, this is the bill.
Yeah, okay.
That almost paid for an engineer run.
Who? Bobby's not an engineer, he didn't take offense to that. Well, that's quite a chunk of cash. So, all at, all at once are, we pretty much gotta pay it, because we gotta have work, workman's comp, or we gotta find a new vendor.
I think we might start checking after, for the next fiscal year.
Well, you know, Cleveland County does not use ACCO for this.
That's right.
And, I don't think Oklahoma County does either.
Oklahoma County's actually self-funded, so I don't know. I would imagine they, that Comp Mutual is probably who they end up going around to, but...
Do you know who, you know who Cleveland County uses? Maybe something we want to look into.
Option one's 205, option two's 208. I'll move it, we take option one.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item nine, consideration of possible action on resolution establishing participation in ACCO SIG for property and liability insurance for 2018, 2019, and selection of payment option.
Again, we save a little money, 29.39, so just right at $3,000 if we pay it in full, which we've done the last few years. The deductible fund make up, there's $50,000 being rolled forward, so we have to make up $40,000 in the deductible fund. And also, we had a premium increase of a little bit because we had to add on the new building, the ATV building out at the fairgrounds, had to be added on, so it, it increased the premium a little bit, to a total outlay of $235,944.
Okay, 200,000, or 235,944 for the premium, and 40,000 for the deductible?
That, the 40, the deductible fund is included in that.
Okay.
So, the total, the total wrapped together, which is the deductible fund, the property premium, the liability premium, brings it in as a total of $235,944.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's where we're gonna get the share and pay up the deductible on this HV account.
Thank you.
I remember somebody saying something about that, but I don't know where that came from.
Option one, option two.
Did you sign it?
He's not even looking up.
You want to look at it first. I'll make a motion.
So, your motion is for option one?
Option one, yeah.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 10, consideration of possible action on approving resolution to retire Sheriff K9 Max and release the handler Lieutenant Paul Martin.
Max, over the last year, he's developed a, a issue with his eyes. Slowly starting to go blind, and we've moved Paul to a different position, and we think it's time to retire him. At his age, I wouldn't want to pass him to a new handler, especially with his eye problems. So, I think as far as we're concerned, we've got the most usable life, service life out of him, and it's time for him to...
How old is he?
I'm gonna say he's six.
Wow.
The car wreck's awesome.
Yeah, there's some, some disease, and he, that the vet said it's not, it's not too uncommon, but it's not real common. And we've been treating him with eye drops, it's gotten a little bit better, but if you can imagine trying to put eye drops in a working dog's eyes, it's, it might lose better.
I'll make the motion.
I can second that.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 11, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 software license agreement with Landmark GSI for the assessor's office. I believe this is the software that they use to total lift oilfield?
No, the, the task contract is the company, we did that the last time. I think this is their in-house software, that they do their mapping and their valuation, all that, that operation of their office.
Okay. What's the cost of the?
They've got it, they've got it set just for a chairman, I mean, the board will approve the chairman's sign.
Okay.
Uh, Marvin, let me look at that. I thought I had flagged that, but maybe I didn't. Oh, it's because it's here at the back.
No.
$25,572.
Is this your only company to provide that type of deal, or?
For, for the assessor's office, it's like Kelpro for us. I'm not gonna tell you that there's not another company out there, but it's who they're wrapped up with, I mean, much like me with Kelpro, so... Or you all, you all have Kelpro. This covers their annual software license, any of their maintenance, their service call, and their Marshall and Swift fee is included in that as well.
So, is this considered a service, Troy? I mean, I'm...
It's a software licensing agreement.
But I'm, I'm just looking at, so if this doesn't fall into the $15,000?
This is not a biddable item.
Okay, well, it doesn't have to be bid.
No. One, and there's two ways on that. It may have been bid when it was first brought in back in the day, but once you do that to renew it annually, you do not have to rebid.
I see. And it would probably cost more money to switch over to another software.
Oh, yeah, it would be huge.
The expense and the effort to do that.
Make the motion to accept.
I'll second. Those money ones, yeah.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes without objection. Consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 cooperative agreement with USDA APHIS Wildlife Service.
Environment control program that is divided to each of the districts annually. The cost has not changed, it's a total of $2,400, which breaks down to $800 per district.
I'll move it, approve.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on, we've cleared it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 13, consideration of possible action on approving resolution to transfer balance of dormant accounts to county general account.
As I've tried to, to talk about a little bit as the last few months, state auditor's office has come in and completely revamped and changed the way that we number and track funds and accounts in the county. All of the numerical changes, all of that will go into effect for us July 1st with the new fiscal year. It's gonna be a, a difficult process, but once it's all in place and up and running, it'll be beneficial. Part of that is we have these accounts that have little bits of money that have been there for many, many years, and they're considered dormant, and the advice of the auditors, rather than moving them to, and yet again, just rolling them to another fiscal year, is let's clean, clean it up. And so, to do that, we do it by a resolution. The law says the dormant funds, regardless of where they came from, when they go dormant and are being cleaned up, they go to county general. So, we had the safe room grant that was done after the tornadoes in 90, was that '9?
99.
And we've had some, and so, how long that has been laying there, for $1,060 about? We had a cemetery where someone, a private individual had to post funds for a cemetery that they were doing. The check was, was refunded, their balance, they never cashed the check. That money's been laying there for about six years now, it's $421. There's a federal equitable sharing, which, back, and I believe that actually came in under, when Randy Richardson was sheriff, was basically forfeiture funds from the federal government, and the account ran down to $23.86, has been laying there all this time. So, those are where we are. We may, depending on where I am on June 29th, I may have another one of these type resolutions for any that I catch between now and then, so we're not rolling them into the new fiscal year. But that's, that's what the... But that's, that's what this is, a resolution to do.
Good. We've got a balance or a total on...
I didn't run it tape, I listed each account individually with the dollar amount. Roughly a thousand and sixteen, probably sixteen hundred dollars, somewhere in there, added together.
I'll move it approved.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item fourteen, consideration of possible action on approving contract with Haskell Lemon Construction for bid number 2018-19, option number two, overlay of Cooksey Road.
This bid was awarded by the board on June the fourth. I am in receipt of all the required bonds to go along with the contract, three hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred two dollars and fifty cents.
I'll move it approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you vote on it?
I did.
Okay. Motion passes without objection.
This is your setup for chair.
Yeah, and then I'll be running it still watering this way.
Item fifteen, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019, second option to renew contract with Oklahoma Office of Juvenile Affairs.
This was a renewal on detention transportation, so this is that money that, that the sheriff's office receives for transporting juveniles back and around the state. We have a, a contract with four options to renew, and so this is exercising their second option to renew.
Make the motion to approve, unless you want to see it first. Well, what kind of heaven?
You gotta have it.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item sixteen, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 agreement with Caliber Interact for the sheriff's office. Can we talk about that?
You, that's up to you all.
This is our Mobile Cop software that allows us to run tags and rich and driver's license in our vehicles. We are looking at a option that will be better for us, but currently, this is our operating software for, for running that stuff from our vehicles.
So you're looking at switching out maybe?
Yes.
So if we enter into this, are we bound to it, or?
I think it's a thirty-day or a sixty-day. There isn't out.
Lead time?
Yes.
What do you think, Mike?
I think the work. What's the, what's the yearly agreement cost for that?
I, I want to say fifteen hundred dollars per user.
Per user?
Three thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents is the total of this invoice.
Oh, so you only have a couple of, you only have it installed on a couple of workstations?
We've got an all or few or... Maybe it's just the new license that costs fifteen hundred dollars, or it might be cheaper, I'd have to look that.
That's what it looks like. When you, when you look down here, you've got two licenses that are four hundred nineteen eighty, but they, they're really, it's just one. And they're broke down here, but I think your new license is what pushed up. Because they've actually, if you read through here, enterprise, other, enterprise, other, enterprise, what's the difference in the two?
That's a good question.
Mobile enterprise and mobile other, and then token other. I think what they've done is, once you hit a level, they're way discounted.
Yeah, there is, you know, I'm trying to think based on the number of users you have, you get a discounted rate, and like I said, this is the same, when I can hear, it's the same contract, same, same kind we've had. But, but when we're, we're looking at going to a GSafe, which is kind of a borderline CAD system that also will allow us to run our, our vehicle registrations and driver's license through together, so, so Mobile Cop would actually, this, this Caliber would actually go away. And if we all don't do one software, depending on what O L S is going to charge us, we're still looking at all that stuff.
So is this something we want, we need?
Yeah, we're gonna have to have it, or else we're gonna burden dispatch with a lot of information.
Make a motion?
Sure, I'll make, I'll make.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item seventeen, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 service agreement with Dan's Pest Control for the sheriff's office.
Annual pest control for the sheriff in jail, and the investigation in drug court areas, four forty-seven per month.
Most people have tests over there, so I'm thinking. It's working, you say he's over here?
There's a, you know, we take in a lot of people. A lot of people are out here, and we got a kitchen.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that's the, I think that's the biggest...
Foodstuffs.
That's the biggest reason that we, for that burden cost, just.
I'll move it approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item eighteen, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 renewal with Leeds Online Investigation System for the sheriff's office.
Nine forty-eight for the year.
Yeah, this is a, basically an information gathering tool.
I use Google.
This is one step. This is Google Plus.
Google Plus to nine forty-eight.
Yes.
So, they're just there.
We're gonna...
A slow pitch. I'll move it approved. I'll second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes without objection. Item nineteen, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 service agreement with Integrity Heat and Air for the sheriff's office.
Multiple service, multiple system service agreement, two thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the year.
Is that so they give you prime service, I mean, if something breaks, they're out here immediately?
Yeah, you know, I can tell you that, especially during the summertime, you know, the summertime's bad, but wintertime, if we get a heater going out, we got enough light that we can keep warm, but and those cells, those pipes, when the air conditioner goes out, we can have some problems on our hands.
The two worst things that can happen is the air conditioner go out and the kitchen break down at the same time.
I'll move it approved.
I'll second.
We need a mate, they come right out, gets back to us.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item twenty, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 maintenance agreement with Clifford Power for the sheriff's office.
The annual maintenance, well... Nine hundred and fifteen dollars, I was trying to find that.
So that they come out and start, start it and test it periodically?
Every Monday morning, we hear it, fire it.
Cool.
Yeah, we had, State General Spectator was here a week or two ago, and was going through, let me have that power flash, and I was giving a tour, and all of a sudden, it went black, I mean, completely dark, and there was no windows, and about five seconds, Jerry kicked on, and first reject, State General Spectator was there to do his, his tour.
So let's see, it works?
It works.
Okay. Item, on item twenty...
I'll move it approved.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item twenty-one, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 agreement with Regional Organized Crime Information Center for the sheriff's office.
Three hundred dollars.
Three hundred, you're three thousand.
Well, the thing with ROCIC is they offer training as well as information on bulletins, and they also have equipment that we can borrow to do, god be it, cameras on telephone calls. They have a lot of resources, we don't get charged for it because we're a member.
They gain belly dumps and some...
I'm sure they do, yeah.
Belly, is that two Ls?
Sign, sign me up. Road grader. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item twenty-two, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 maintenance agreement with VistaCom for sheriff's office.
This is our...
You guys spend a lot of money.
This is our audio recording device, our logger basically, that records all of our radio traffic as well as our phone lines and stuff like that.
Go ahead.
Four thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars.
So then, you, you guys, they, they were body cameras, does this, does this, it doesn't archive any of that?
No, this is just radio traffic as well as our, our actual public service phones.
I, I got confused when it said Vista, and I was thinking visual.
Sure.
Okay, no worries.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item twenty-three, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 software support agreement with Southwest Solutions Group for the sheriff's office.
Can you not bring some of this?
One hundred and twenty-five dollars.
This way, please. Uh, this is, is basically the, the label company that we use that, that prints the labels for all of our files for filing. It's much like a doctor's office would use as far as the color coding.
I need a second camera.
We got a lot of files, Marty. Some of their names on it.
We'll get rid of some of them.
That being the case, I move it approved. Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item twenty-four, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 warranty agreement with Eye Touch Biometrics for the sheriff's office.
It's our fingerprint, our digital fingerprint machine.
One thousand nine hundred eight dollars.
I know. What's true is expensive to have the sheriff around.
I know, I'll make the motion to approve.
I wish we didn't need one.
Sheriff?
Law enforcement.
Oh, what, they're, they're by kumbaya.
Let's see.
I've got, I've got a motion.
Someone made a motion, I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the Eye Touch? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Here we go again, item twenty-five, consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 agreement with Archive Social for the sheriff's office.
The thing that Archive Social does is it basically archives all of our social media content, our Facebook. We're looking at, at getting a Twitter account, and it's one of those deals since we have a Facebook page that's covered in the Open Records Act. And so being able to archive anything that's been posted on there or deleted on there, this is the company that, that does all that for us. So if somebody makes a comment or makes threads or something and deletes it, we still got to archive that, so...
Interesting.
This day and age, it's easier to use the one to try to go back three weeks and pull data, or if they do an open records request, it's broad. This system allows us to go in and search by word or whatever and print off everything.
Two thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars.
I know.
We, we can get a total on...
Eleven to twenty-five.
That's a lot of Twitter. Wouldn't it be easier not to Twitter?
It'd be easier not to have social media, but that's where we're at.
That's way with the future.
That's the coffee shop.
Yep, it is the new coffee shop.
You know, part of the biggest thing I face is people messaging us on Facebook to take care of a call. They think that's a dispatching tool. See, those drivers, dislocation.
You know, the, the contact this button at the top, that doesn't say nine one one on it?
Do you believe the calls we field?
That's where I go, that's where I go to get all my facts.
Yeah, they're equationally using that for many, yeah, every time.
You see it.
It's convenient.
I get a lot of messages too. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on item twenty-five.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Mine's seconded.
It's the last one.
Does this mean?
Any, any further discussion? Hearing now, it's the last one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item twenty-six, consideration of possible action on approving juvenile detention contracts for FY 2018, 2019.
Thought that was the last one.
Well, technically, these aren't the sheriff, County General has to pay for these.
Canadian County Juvenile Detention, thirty-six dollars a day. Community Works Cleveland County Regional, thirty-five dollars a day. Community Works Potawatomi County Juvenile, thirty-five dollars a day. ROC MD Area Youth Services, twenty-five dollars a day. Sacan Fox Indian Nation Juvenile Detention, twenty-one dollars and eleven cents a day. Eleven cents. Texas County Juvenile Detention Center, forty-one dollars a day.
We make the effort to recoup, I do not know in this last year how much we've received, but I'm guessing around two thousand that we have gotten reimbursed for. The way that works is, is at adjudication, the judge has to impose the fee that they repay their, their housing cost, and so quite often, they're, they'll make their fine and court costs in twenty-five dollar a month type payments, so it trickles in slowly.
Do we have a rough idea of cost versus recoup?
I, I haven't.
Pay out versus get paid?
I haven't, we, we average from about twenty-eight to thirty-five thousand dollars a year to house the juveniles. We only began trying to recoup any of the funds two and a half, I think, years ago, and, and I think we're getting about two thousand a year that we got last year in recouped funds. We cannot recoup anything for, for minors that are DHS care. We can only recoup for those that are, are still at home, so...
So we're getting back less than ten percent of what it's costing us?
But until about two and a half years ago, we weren't getting anything, so...
Yeah, it's better than the shark sticking in, I guess.
I, I, quite often, the taxpayers do not realize that, that our general government pays the housing cost for those that are sent to juvenile detention facilities, and the law requires that.
All right, entertain a motion on item twenty-six.
And I'll make the motion.
Have a motion. I will second, since I'm always being quiet. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item twenty-seven, the consideration of possible action on approving FY 2018, 2019 software license and make most agreement with TM Consulting for the treasurer's office.
This is the software programming annual cost that the treasurer uses. Let's see here, fifteen thousand forty-eight annually for the lease and maintenance, and then... Fifteen thousand forty-eight annually for the lease and maintenance, and then it's broke down to ninety-five dollars an hour for any onsite support cost.
Trying to get me in trouble. That's not a hard task either, by the way. How much is this drawn?
Fifteen, it's on the front page there, fifteen, just under sixteen thousand, fifteen something.
Fifteen thousand four eighty is what it said, I think, the last one. Plus forty-eight hours, forty-eight dollars an hour if they come onsite?
No, ninety-five an hour.
Ninety-five. That's almost like hiring a plumber. Entertain a motion on item twenty-seven.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item twenty-eight, consideration of possible action on resolution approving requisitioning officers for various accounts.
I have none for twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight.
I can't, there's something that costs money, we don't have any.
Wow. We approve that. Item thirty, consideration of possible action on approving the following permanent road crossing permits for Southern Star Central Gas Pipeline Incorporated and Great Plains, Great Salt Plains Midstream Southern Star, twenty inch gas line. This is, this has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven crossings and parallels Midwest Boulevard from County Road sixty through County Road seventy-three.
I'll make the motion with her.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item thirty-one, consideration of possible action on approving the following temporary road crossing permits for Terra Oilfield Services and Brickman Fast Line. It's a twelve inch water line, parallels Pennsylvania Avenue, point one five miles south of Penn and Charter Oak. Thirty-six hundred feet south of the northeast corner of Section thirty S twelve north three west. It keeps growing though.
Indeed. Would you in favor of that?
Yeah, I forgot, today is in my district and then.
I didn't want to make the motion.
I will move to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item thirty-two, consideration of possible action on the consent agenda. Just approve payroll, transfers, blanket purchase, accept monthly reports, monthly reports to the health department, monthly reports for the election board.
He's all signed.
A little ahead of ourselves.
Are we?
Yeah. Looks like we got a lot of signing to do. That's a lot of permits. So Bobby, you been riding your scooter any?
Little bit, when it's not too hot, not too cold, not too rainy.
Wow, that kind of cuts down the opportunities here in Oklahoma, don't it?
When it gets to a hundred, I'm out.
I'm not.
Rice for the soup.
No, it's, it's nasty.
Oh, it is. Commute to college on a bike.
You're talking about a motorcycle, Mike.
Motorcycle. Motorcycle is what I was on. Granddaddy of a sports shoe. I was shooting two fags on it.
I'm saying maybe horse and buggy, not a bike.
Oh, yeah. A mule? That'll get you through hard times here. We are sunned now. How's that work for all you already done this? What we already did? Yeah, I already had signatures.
I think this is one that got stuck in your pile, it wasn't on the agenda, and so now it's been put back on the agenda.
So it got signed, does that mean on the agenda or is that?
That's why it's on now.
I see, I see.
I believe, you'd have to ask Sarah, she does those, but I think that that's what it was.
We got it signed up? Okay, that's a good check. Three hundred dollars.
Income, almost paid for some of that. Why is he saying this? Sheriff.
Is that where that revolver front comes in? No, I'm not on this agenda.
Consent.
Drawing this rule. Yeah, we already called the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Called for Bill Morse.
I ain't getting to be in the cold.
Transfers. Officer reports.
Should have do it all. While we're doing this, could you refresh the board's memory on where we're at on the appointment of the excise board number?
I've not heard anything, I mean, Dan's last meeting will be July the second.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was looking for, I think.
Yeah.
Marty, that comes out of your district, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Also got Bill's jail trust.
He's on the jail trust as well.
Did he give us a letter or anything?
He did verbal.
Yeah, it's indicated when he spoke to you.
That's right, he did.
Has to get that.
Do you find consent?
Blankets, yes. That concludes the consent agenda.
I'll move with her, consent.
Second. Have a motion and a second, on item thirty-two, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes without objection. Item thirty-three, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for June twenty eighteen.
I'm against paying.
You're against paying, I'm with you there. Better do District Two's account, right?
Yeah, I hear they're paying for some money, they can pay your camera with seventy-six.
There you go. So when we change numbers on here, is it gonna make any more sense to us laymen that don't know what these numbers mean half the time?
Probably not.
I'll just check. So I'm still gonna have to have a program to figure out what's what?
Well, sixty-one ten, what you're looking at there, anything that was sixty-one ten is District One. Sixty-one twenty, District Two, sixty-one thirty, District Three.
How's that gonna change?
So the new way they're gonna do it is they have assigned a fund number, which you all never see the fund, fund number anyway. They're, they're lining those up, and then the.
You guys all the fun.
The function of government, they've now issued by function, we have to identify, and then the department numbers, and then the accounting numbers. So it doesn't change the practice that we have in place, it's just going to change the way it's identified and the way that the state can pull reports. It's a data tracking, it's gonna help the auditors in data tracking as well, because we're all, we'll be uniform across seventy-seven counties. It's gonna help the budget makers, because we'll be uniform across seventy-seven counties. So one thousand is, is the county clerk, it's not gonna change, it will stay one thousand. Fire departments that we've had numbered as FD dash zero one dash two two nine O will now have a number. So there'll be eighty-five oh one, and what has been identified for M and O of two two nine O will now become two thousand and five. Capital Outlay Designation moves from four thousand to forty-one ten. So there's gonna be some, some awkwardness as we get things shifted through. In the long run, it's gonna provide better data tracking across the state, is really what it's gonna do.
It'll standardize all the counties on the accounting system, that makes sense. It's good. Include sign in the claims.
I'll make the motion with her for the claims.
Second. Have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Any citizen?
We got an addendum.
We've got an addendum, I missed that.
Yeah, we were a little late on it.
The addendum is consideration of possible action on approving purchase order from CBRI account number sixty-one fifty dash two two nine O to Atlas Paving Company in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for District Two. And, and let me, just to refresh you all, if you remember several months back, each district was awarded a one hundred thousand dollar allotment.
I think I got it here.
To be used from CBRI. District Two used that to cover a project that was then reimbursed one hundred percent. So that money went back in, so this is their, their use of that allotment.
I think we're supposed to.
I'm kind of against it, Mike.
I'll make the motion with her. I'll second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I want to find where I'm at. It'll be a hard time.
Hearing only one dissent, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. All right. Back to where I was. Item thirty-four, any citizen desiring to be heard?
Air conditioning works.
Yeah.
Did you feel the way it come off?
Yeah.
Not to, that maintenance green.
I imagine.
It's a little long here, though, it should.
Should, it oughta cause. All right, any other citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing none, we'll move on to item thirty-five, comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners. Mike, you got anything?
Yeah, we got that two miles pine that we're paving, we'll have the road closed here and there while we're doing a little shoulder work and range work, then they'll.
Two miles between which?
Between Waterloo and Charter Oak.
Cool, all right, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Marty?
I'm quiet, I'm done.
Okay. I, I have nothing for the board either, at that point. I will entertain a motion on item thirty-six, consideration of possible action on adjournment.
I'll move with adjourned.
I can second that, we are adjourned.